I'm going to call the Springfield City Council Work Session to order with roll call.
Mayor Van Gordon.
Here.
Councillor Weber.
Here.
Councillor Mo.
Here.
Councillor Rodley.
Here.
Councillor Blackwell. Councillor Doyle.
Here.
And Councillor Pictionary.
Here, thank you.
All right, we've got one item today for the work session, it's the Glenwood Plan Amendment with Ally Camp.
Thanks for having us. I brought Mark Russ up with me and we have Sandy Benson in the audience for technical expertise should we need it. Today, we're here to talk about options for a property owner and their tenant in the Glenwood area. The tenant is a Glenwood business, their name is Atkore, they produce pipes, pipes of all kind, water pipes, conduit pipes, electric pipes. This business continues to expand its production line and needs additional area for increased flexibility and storage. For tonight's review of land use process options, I brought some experts with me. But I'm going to make sure that I share a little bit about the context for the site, the why, and the business. So first, a little bit about the business, Atkore, which was formerly known as Bridge Line Pipe, was acquired in 2014. They are a global producer of all the pipes that I mentioned earlier, and they have roughly 100 employees in the Glenwood area and 4,000 employees globally. They are one of Glenwood's largest property taxpayers, and to demonstrate this business's investment in growth at the Glenwood site, they are a two-time enterprise zone applicant where they have made improvements to the site of the change for property. That was in 2009 and 2014. I took a tour of the facility back in May, and I learned that they are the highest producing facility in the western region for Atkore. Two years ago, they began leasing a 30,000 square foot warehouse at the Glenwood operation, and they have already grown beyond this perhaps. Okay, so we talked a little bit about the company, I'm going to talk a little bit about the land. The piece of property at discussion is located between two rail lines, one of which actively serves Atkore's site currently, and it's essential to their business. It's 2.9 acres, it's triangular shaped, and it's encumbered by a railroad track. The left track kind of juts into the site a little bit, so you can't do anything on the other side of the railroad track. It limits the usable acreage on the site. If you look at attachment one, your vicinity map, people will see this. And also, this piece of property also does not front Franklin Boulevard. So the subject property is zoned as employment mixed-use land in the Glenwood Refinement Plan. This does not permit outdoor storage. The site of the Atkore facility is zoned like medium industrial, the light purple directly adjacent to the subject property. You can see these disimishing zones on the zoning map, or so the attachment to in your packet. The LMI zone, the light medium industrial permits outdoor storage, which would support Atkore's continued growing Glenwood. These zones both fall into the same category of employment land, so a change would not result in a categorical change. I like to think of this exchange of zones as a little bit of a trade-off, it's elimination of an employment land for another use in exchange for support of an existing growing business. So the options are outlined in your AIS, we have our classic plan amendment zone change, which is taken on by applicants, processed by the city. There's an exchange of application fees to the city of approximately $41,000 during that option. Option two could be where city council initiates a plan amendment and a zone change on behalf of the applicant, and city staff prepare those materials. And then option three is a hybrid of both, where a city council could initiate the plan amendment and zone change on behalf of the property owner or applicant, and the property owner prepares and submits application materials. I'm going to have Mark Russ talk a little bit about the time trade-off for some of these options.
So any questions before I jump into some of that?
Go ahead.
I'm just curious why the cost is $41,000 to do a plan?
So that is just our adopted fee for that type of application in our fee schedule? As you know, last fall, we did planning fee analysis and continuing to evaluate those fees, and we'll be coming back to you with more opportunity to look deeper at those fees, but that is our current adopted fee.
Yeah, I understand that, but what's in, what's in, what does that include, or what's involved in that?
So there's technically two different applications, so that total $41,000 number is made up of two different numbers, and I don't know them separately off the top of my head, but let's just say roughly about $20,000 each. The first one is for the plan amendment, the second one is for the zone change. So that's two different processes, we would be holding two separate public hearings processes for those two separate applications. One of the first one, the plan amendment, is amending this Springfield Comprehensive Plan, which also would be a multiple-pronged approach, because part of the Springfield Comprehensive Plan includes the Glenwood Refinement Plan. That's part of the comprehensive plan, and then the zone change itself is separate. So it's, there's two pieces within these options of preparing the application to submit, and then processing that application once it's submitted, so that 41,000 is just our typical processing time for the city to review all the materials, send notice to the state, send notice to all the surrounding properties, run a public hearings process through the Planning Commission, and then have them make a recommendation to the city council, run a separate public hearings process through the city council for both of those. So that's all the staff time involved that would be covered by those fees. So with that, the, as Ally said, the three different options, the typical one is where an applicant would apply, prepare all the application materials, submit it, and then we process it. Another approach is the city council could initiate that on behalf of the applicant. We've done this in similar cases where you might want to initiate the Glenwood Refinement Plan, or an amendment to the Glenwood Refinement Plan for the city as a whole, or for specific things within this Glenwood Refinement Plan or within the city. In that case, the city would take on the preparation of the application, which would be a bunch of time associated with that, in addition to the time to actually process the application, so it's kind of a a two-pronged approach, there's the lead-in work and then the actual typical processing work. I can give you some estimates, really high-level, kind of range guesses. I reached out to two different consultants that we work with regularly in the community that do this kind of work to get a sense of what they thought it might take. Again, they don't know any of the specifics, I asked a really general question to them. The range that I got between the two consultants was between roughly about 50 hours to 100 hours of time for them to prepare that type of application. And so you could multiply that by different hourly rates and things like that to come up with the cost, but in terms of a time commitment for city staff to take on preparing or putting together the application for us then to process would involve that probably about that much additional time as well. And then the third approach that's highlighted, the hybrid approach, would be where the applicant would still do all that lead-in work, they would prepare the application, still submit it to us to process, but since the city council would initiate in that choice, the $41,000 fees wouldn't be paid to the city for us to do the process.
If.
The refinement plan in general needs to be really reevaluated, but at the time this was done, there was a lot of these properties out there, we didn't know what to do with them. So we put a designation on them, which, in this case, wasn't right. But the property owner doesn't know that, they just let it go, and it's happened to me a couple of times. So, in this case, it maybe it missed zone, it just was laid on them, and I'd like to see it somehow, it had changed cost to the city. And that's a good company down there, PW Pipe, I always called, never, never, never.
It is a really fine point that we're putting on this, that the code allowed, in their current zoning, they, it allows for outdoor storage. On the refinement plan, the Glenwood Refinement Plan piece that's proposed to be changed, it specifically does not allow outdoor storage. So that's the crux of the change, is to allow them to continue to do outdoor storage like they do on their existing site.
I see this as a way to correct a little bit of every plan.
Other questions?
Comment, thank you for these options, very much so. Doesn't, I like option B, because it's kind of a partnership approach in my mind. They're, they're maybe willing to assist, and I think we heard that they are able or wanting to, or will participate in option C, I meant, not B, C.
No.
Sorry, my bad.
I was double-checking that.
I caught my sock, and so option C makes sense to me, we're doing it as a partnership, it's going to help the city for taxable property. It, I mean, there's outside storage massively just to the north of it, and adjoining that property, so it's not like it's going to be adding to a different area. If they're willing to do the legwork for us, then we don't have our staff time tied into that, so I support option B.
C.
C.
Three.
C.
It's three.
It's early.
It's the hybrid option, I think, is what everybody is describing, since lettering and numbering is hard to turn around for a sudden one day.
Hybrid option, then.
Victoria.
What do you think is the best option, if you had, if you were able to choose and not us?
We're speaking to, who is that, or what would you?
You share first.
Well, I think one of the pieces that we discussed in the AIS is the opportunity cost. So there's a trade-off, if staff were to use the limited amount of capacity of time that we have to actually do the preparation, it would mean we wouldn't be able to work on something else. And I think the something else that would be the likely trade-off at this point would be some other code amendment work that we really need to do, that would be some small pieces of what we originally envisioned as the phase three of the larger code update project that we're looking at. And just two quick examples are, one is some of the language for our annexations, we would like to update to be in compliance with state law. And then our land division section of our code is another piece of our ordinance we didn't do initially, that badly needs to be modernized and updated. So again, that, there's a trade-off there, if we were to take on doing, say, option two, where the city prepares the application, that would mean staff time that's not able to be spent on doing some of that other important work. So from my perspective, I think the hybrid approach is a really good option.
Are there other places that you, that we're going to see this in Glenwood as well, like other issues with zoning and things like that that may come up, would it be beneficial to kind of make a blanket? I don't know, I don't want to make more work, but I'm just asking, like, if it's something that could be done overall, or in a larger space than just this one business?
Yeah, we talked a little bit about that. I think this case is special because of the support it lends to the active and growing business, and also the fact that it's not a categorical land use change. There are different considerations to take into mind whenever we're changing what might be employment land to what might be commercial. This would be employment to employment, so it makes it a little bit simpler. The site being constrained to just really limits what it can be developed into in the future.
Thank you.
All right, I think we now have our original, it is the hybrid option, option three or C, depending on how you're calculating it.
And just as a point of next steps, we would still be coming back to you to formally initiate it. This is just some direction for how to pursue this one.
Yeah, yeah. Perfect, thank you. I'm going to adjourn us for the 18 minutes, and then we'll reconvene. I'm going to call the city council regular session to order with roll call. Mayor Van Gordon.
Here.
Councillor Weber.
Here.
Councillor Mo.
Here.
Councillor Rodley.
Here.
Councillor Blackwell.
Here.
Councillor Doyle.
Here.
And Councillor Pictionary.
Here, thank you.
Please join me for the pleasure of origins. As we begin our meeting tonight, there are two designated times for public testimony this evening, under public hearings and business from the audience. If you are attending in person, please complete the request to speak card located at the entrance of the library meeting room and give it to the city reporter. If you're joining us online with a tablet, smartphone, or computer and wish to speak either of those times, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom. The order of public testimony is as follows, anyone in the, in person in the council chambers, and then anyone who has raised their virtual hands. Neil, how many people do we have joining us?
Approximately 50 in the chambers tonight, and nine attendees on.
All right, thank you. First item, please.
First item is the consent calendar.
Second.
Neil, can you call a vote, please?
Yes, Councillor Weber.
Yes.
Councillor Mo.
Yes.
Councillor Rodley.
Yes.
Councillor Blackwell.
Yes.
Councillor Doyle.
Aye.
And Councillor Pictionary.
Here.
Motion passes six.
Thank you.
Motion passes six yeses, zero no's. Next item, please.
You have two public hearings this evening, this is public hearing number one, annexation of territory to the city of Springfield. Annex approximately 35.68 acres of residential property located on Linda Lane, map 18-02-04-00, tax lot 1511, and map 18-02-04-42, tax lot 1300. And we currently annex segments like public road rights of way for Linda Lane and Mount Vernon Road. This is ordinance number two, ordinance annexing certain territory, vacant parcels identified as assessor's map 18-02-04-00, tax lot 1511, and assessor's map 18-02-04-42, tax lot 1300. And public rights of way for approximately 560-foot-long segment of Linda Lane, the intersection of Linda Lane and Mount Vernon Road, and approximately 750-foot-long segment of Mount Vernon Road, and the intersection of Mount Vernon Road and South 57th Street to the city of Springfield and Willamian Park and Recreation District, withdrawing the same territory from the Willaquenzi Rural Fire Protection District, adopting a separability clause and providing an effective date. This is the first reading, and Andy Limber is here for this item.
Is there any counsel, councillor? Nothing on voting. I'll proceed. Um, this proposed annexation is an action of council by adopting resolution in April to annex city-owned property and public rights of way. There is a segment of property that is owned by Lane County, and they are co-applicant for this annexation action, so they have provided concurrence for the annexation of a segment of Linda Lane. I'm going to try that, there we go. So this annexation area is a contiguous property that's owned by the city, which is the bulk of the annexation. The right-of-way for Linda Lane extends to Mount Vernon Road, and there's some areas of unincorporated rights of way at Mount Vernon Road over to South 57th Street. Staff affectionately call it a knife blade of annexation territory that is proposed for annexation concurrently with the remainder of the property that is owned by the city. This cleans up some of the city limits lines in the area to clarify jurisdictional range, as well as brings the territory into the city's limits for future upgrades to the various roads. The annexation territory for the city is about 35 acres. There's a segment, as I mentioned, on Linda Lane, it's sort of the west half of Linda Lane that extends west of, there are two properties in the northwest corner that are not subject to this annexation. The purpose of the annexation is to facilitate dedication of wetlands, wetland conservation areas, and future urban development of this property. The property abuts the city limits along the eastern boundary, where the Jasper Meadows neighborhood was previously developed, in fact, there's a partial width street, South 57th Street, that adjoins this property. The Jasper Trunk Sewer Line that was installed about a decade ago runs essentially midway through this property, east-west, runs underneath the wetland areas and provides sewer service to the subject property for future development as well, so. Staff did receive written testimony and provided that to you this evening. I suspect there will be more additional testimony this evening, so I can answer questions and address some of the issues that were raised in the written testimony to provide some clarification to property owners that live along Linda Lane, particularly the respondents that provided comments concerned about takings of their property, the fact the annexation results in loss of private property, that's not the case. So just want to add some clarification, and can ask our other questions resulting from public testimony this evening, so. That constitutes the annexation action as before the house this evening. Are there any questions before I open the public hearing? All right, then I'm going to open the public hearing. I have one physical card, it's from D.J. Thomas.
Yeah.
Oh, D.J., come on up, please. State your name and address or location in the city for the record, and then you will have three minutes.
Where do you want to put your hand?
Right, you can see, that seat right there.
My name is D.J. Thomas, I live at 571A, Paradot Way. And I'm referencing the map that you put up there. If you want to bring it up again, please.
If you can just make your comments, that would be great.
Okay, that was one comment. I noticed that this is 34 acres, and I'm looking at the access road. According to this map, there is only one access road. And it's on Linda Lane, which of course is a one-lane undeveloped road. And I'm also noticing on Mount Vernon Road going north, it looks like there's a little detour, a little part of that proposal extension of this acquisition. It widens a little bit, and then it narrows, so I'm wondering what the purpose of that is. And my, another, my closing comment is that for 34 acres, there's not a whole lot of access for 34 acres of homes, or whatever they're going to put there. Jasper Meadows has only one way in and one way out, which is, could be really dangerous in a wildfire. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to go to online folks next, Neil, do we have?
Yes, we have one hand raised, we'll see if it's for this item, and that's Teresa Koford. Teresa, you should be able to unmute your microphone.
No, I'm planning to speak for Business From the Audience.
Okay, we'll hold you then, thank you.
All right, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing, and you want to come back up? I don't know if you can share more information based on the public testimony that we saw? Sure, if we can bring the map up again, I can, I don't know if this has a directional arrow, it probably wouldn't work on the screen, but oh yeah, it does, okay. So I guess to a degree, the physical developed access to this property is through Linda Lane right now, the road is a gravel road that ends roughly at this location, then it becomes a private driveway south of that point. Right now, as I mentioned, there is public right-of-way stubbed in at Mineral Way and South 57th Street, it's a partially developed street. So there are essentially two partially developed public streets, one that's paved and has homes on it in the Jasper Meadows neighborhood, one that is not paved and has homes on it on Linda Lane, and at some point in some configuration, there will be a crossover of these roads as it develops, which provides for access to this area as it develops in the future. That also affords a secondary egress for the Jasper Meadows neighborhood, so it's, it would improve connectivity. As of right now, this is just the initial action to bring into the city limits, there are no development plans currently in place for this. I'm just going to advance to the next slide and just show, and the the wetlands that are on this property. There we go, so one of the primary purposes for the city to annex this property is to dedicate areas of wetland, or high-value wetlands that are serving as mitigation for the next phase of the Jasper Trunk Sewer Line, which is extending parallel with Jasper Road and the railroad as extending to the southeast past the intersection of Bob's Jaw Parkway to future development areas, which are essentially the farthest southeast extension of Springfield's urban growth boundary. Because the city is impacting wetlands along that corridor with the construction of this sewer line, they have to mitigate it at 10 to 1 ratio for, because of the quality of the wetlands. And so that is one of the reasons for the city originally acquiring the property, is these are high-value wetlands. These can serve as a mitigation area that will be preserved as a, as a wetland conservation area to allow for the trunk sewer line to proceed. There are no other real options other than paying essentially per acreage a tremendous amount of money in order to compensate essentially for the impacted wetlands, so. There are no wetland banks in this area that the city could rely upon, and so they're creating a wetland bank on this property. It's possible that there may be other areas of wetlands that will be set aside for other projects in the area, but there is some remainders that are potentially developable that adjoin existing development, both on the east and the west sides, the northwest sort of quadrant, and then there's an eastern area. Not all of the wetlands necessarily would be preserved, it's possible to essentially mitigate them on-site, give some up in order for their others, in order to get roads and utilities through, and to complete some of the necessary infrastructure connections for water, electricity, roads to build out the neighborhoods and allow for another way in and out of Jasper Meadows too, so. So that is one of the primary reasons for this annexation action. Victoria.
No, I'm going to go ahead and just talk about the elephant in the room, which is without having to give away anything you can't, is there any discussions, or has there been any interest in this property by developers for the purpose of developing properties?
Yes, staff met with St. Vincent de Paul, actually a couple of years ago now, looking at a possible development scenario, that was before the city-owned property. They were looking at acquiring this property and looking at some development options for manufactured homes on the site. They did not proceed with that. Subsequently, the city acquired the property essentially for the purposes of the wetland mitigation, was actually cheaper to buy the property than it was to pay the penalty for impacting wetlands. And so there may be residual portions that could be offered up for development, it would not be the city developing the property. It could be a partner agency, it could be a nonprofit, it could be a market developer. And that, I guess, remains to be seen, because the city and council has the option of disposition of property in the future. The annexation also allows for the property to be divided up. Under the city's development code, prior to annexation, the parent property, which included these two parcels in the northwest corner, can only be divided into three pieces, one, two, and then the remainder was the third. So annexation is also required in order to allow for further division of this property, which could be well-intracts or parcels and other developable parcels, dedication of road rights of way and that sort of thing, so. There has been interest expressed, there are definitely pros and cons to trying to develop this area. There is front-ending costs of extending road with the subject Linda Lane to pave it, bring it up to a standard to allow for emergency access and essentially traffic for a neighborhood. There are no water lines in the area, they'd have to be brought in from adjoining areas likely to the east at the Jasper Meadows neighborhood. There is a sanitary sewer trunk line, but there aren't distribution lines, essentially the system hasn't been constructed yet, so. It's a ways out for any type of development to occur on this site. I imagine it would be after annexation, probably a couple of years of planning and preparation in order to get something built on the site, and that's assuming someone's already stepping immediately, we don't have anyone right now that I'm aware of that is looking to acquire the land as soon as it's annexed.
I think it's safe to say that the city's not going to spend city dollars to go in and put in a road in the hopes that somebody might want to buy it.
I would imagine the city may look at, I guess incentivizing development or partnering with a developer. I guess incentivizing development or partnering with a developer to pave the road as part of to facilitate the development of the property.
So Andy, and let's just be clear, the conversation we're talking about right now is really about the wetlands and annexation. Any, right, we haven't even had had the conversation around development and what we potentially want to do. And I want to make sure we separate those conversations for, because this is a high-interest topic.
Yeah, correct. I mean, there has been an expression of interest. It would seem daunting to some of the agencies that we had, that cities had staff had talked to previously. There has not, there's been, I guess, there is continued interest in looking at residential availability. And having the city ownership of property makes that an option. But there is a lot of associated costs and complexities with making it ready for shovel-ready, essentially for, for housing. It's not shovel-ready for housing. So there's gonna have to be some lead-up and planning and, and capital invested in order to get to that point.
Okay, are there any other questions? Steve?
Property owners are out there pretty, pretty concerned. It's changed. It's gonna happen eventually. And have some time to get involved with that change eventually. And again, planning for the future, somebody said two years. Are you kidding me? It's gonna take ten years for the campus out there. That's the way we seem to do things around here. And things can change. They're talking about property values going down. I don't believe that. This is gonna increase the property values in the long run. And then one other question I have is mirror way. If it's, it's one of the options to extend into annex area, goes through the wetland. How can it, can we do that? Can that be done?
It's likely that it wouldn't be extended through that way. Staff has looked at a number of different options to try to minimize the impact of wetland areas in, in order to get a road pattern through there. And I think, you know, once property's annexed and there, there's an expression of interest for, for future development, staff can look at establishing some likely options for extending the roads. It, it probably won't be just, you know, very straight. You know, there may be some curvature, I guess, to, to some of the roads in order to avoid the sensitive areas. I guess, further to your point, Councilor and some of, I guess, in response to some of the questions that were raised in the written correspondence that was submitted. The, the right-of-way for Linda Lane already exists past the properties in question. The respondents are at this property, I believe, ten fifty-five Linda Lane. So there will not be an acquisition right-of-way. There is not a need. The right-of-way is sufficiently wide as it exists right now for the street to be constructed. So there will not be an additional loss or taking of private property along Linda Lane for these rights of, for the essentially future development. It's also reasonable to expect under Oregon Land Use Law that properties within the urban growth boundary will develop in an urban pattern at some point in time. And this is part of our twenty-year inventory. And so it's reasonable to expect that at some point in the future, and maybe a couple of years down the road, there will be urban development. It will continue. The pressures are significant from the state and from, you know, people looking for homes in, in this area. And why shouldn't they? It's a great place to live. There will be pressures to urbanize and to develop this property. So it, it should be a reasonable expectation of people that are within the urban growth boundary. At some point, there will be changes, there will be development, there will be organization, roads will get built, paved, there will be more traffic. And Councilor Mull, you mentioned the issue about property values. Ironically, property values do tend to buoy up the taxes as well. But the city doesn't assess the taxes, the county does. So as things develop and land becomes built with housing, there's a value associated with that. And that also tends to increase values for the adjacent properties as well. That's something we tend to see. So there is a reasonable expectation that unfortunate property taxes will go up, but it also associated with values of the housing and the, and the properties that are doing this property.
Right, other questions? All right, Andy, before, before we let you go, I know there's a lot of work still to be done on these topics. We just got through the question about annexation. So the two asks that I have are, one of them is continue to communicate at the rate that we are from, through that Linda Lane, let's serve that we've created to keep the, keep the neighborhood involved. And then just secondarily, to flag the idea that secondary access is an issue for that neighborhood. When we get through this, if we can solve the secondary access problem in the long term, that would be good for everybody.
Absolutely, yeah. And just as a, I guess, the final comment, the annexation and the possibility of future development, you know, the outer boundaries of this property, adjoining a lot of properties, it's a large notification area. Anything further that occurs on this property, any sort of development plans or proposals? Once again, notification will be sent out to the neighborhood and an opportunity to comment before anything happens. So nothing's gonna suddenly appear or happen overnight. There will be notification provided. It may not be a public hearing, but there's opportunities for residents and, and property owners to review plans, ask questions of staff, see what the plans are, and then provide comment on those plans, should they be submitted.
Okay, great. Go ahead.
Just really random here. But let up take a boy, I think, you go back to that map, please. Do you see where the Mount Vernon Cemetery Road is?
Yes.
And then it goes to the south, and it looks like there's a cutaway on that larger parcel. But that, is that a right-of-way slice?
Are you talking about?
Yeah, going down to the southwest, southeast.
So the, the one to the southeast, that's the railroad? And then Jasper Road is parallel with it?
I know the side of white lines is a railroad, but to the east of those white lines, there's a are you talking about this one right here? Right here.
That's, that's actual property boundaries for that property there.
Right. Go from here, straight east, and make a connection here, so you have that secondary connection.
Yeah, that's possible. And again, I guess it would be dependent on the aspirations of the property owner as well. It is possible, is possible.
And potentially even go east from there into that, into that proposed area that, that is gonna be.
Yes, yeah, there is, there's an existing kind of gravel road that goes partway through the property where there was staging for the Jasper Trunk Sewer, and it's also kind of a means access area.
There's still some potential options out there that people can look at and investors, et cetera. Is that all, that's, if I recall, that's community, uh, community commercial to the east of Cemetery Road?
Yes, yeah, there are some commercial properties in this area.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Andy. That was first reading, no actions required for the, for the next item, please.
Next item, your public hearing number two is the twenty-twenty-three Justice Assistance Grant. Chief Shearer is here for this item, and this is an opportunity for public comment. We will not need a motion.
Good evening, Mayor Council, this is the required public hearing on the proposed uses of the twenty-twenty-three Justice Assistance Grant. The city of Springfield was awarded this DOJ grant for twenty-twenty-three, the amount of twenty-two thousand five hundred and five dollars. So proposing the use of this twenty-twenty-three grant to purchase replacement lidar and radar equipment for the traffic teams and to partially support the development of some recruitment videos.
Other questions? Right, I'm gonna open the public hearing. I don't have any cards for this item. No answer to this. All right, we're gonna close the public hearing. Or always, we always. No, there, there's no action required. Next item, please.
Mayor, the next item is, this is from the audience.
David Strahan. You get to be first. Good evening, Mayor Council, thank you for the opportunity to meet with you in the new digs. My name is David Strahan. I'm a local volunteer, in particular here in Springfield. I volunteer with the Eagan Warming Center and also run some housing programs for veterans and disabled through my nonprofit. I wonder if you have taken day the need for the Eagan Warming Center to have a home again. We're coming up on cold weather, cold winter weather. And I could bore you with facts and numbers of the people that we've helped, the people who housed, the meals that we've served. But I think for the most part, you guys know we've been doing this in Springfield for about ten years. That's actually part of the origin of the, the Warming Center. It's parked, started in Springfield, right here at a church. And we're just not able to provide for the, for the Warming Center this year. And we're asking in particular for use of the memorial building again to use for winter operations. We know it was originally slated as a staging area for the construction that was postponed, the apartment complex next to the dealership. But I'm reaching out on behalf of myself, as a community volunteer, for access to the building again to provide the services that we've been able to provide for the last ten years. It's a site that's well-known to our volunteers. It's well-known to the people that we serve here in Springfield. And it's thought of with great relish to the people that we've housed out of that operation. One of the benefits that comes out of running the Eagan Warming Center is that we identify those in most need. We identify the people with heavy medical needs. I'm able to identify the veterans and direct those directly to help. St. Vincent's runs wonderful housing programs. And we've been able to directly assess our guests' needs and their pets' needs, which is kind of unusual in most communities. So just coming forward to you again as a private citizen to ask that the city consider allowing use of its memorial building for winter operations for the Eagan Warming Center. That's all, and I look forward to seeing you guys more in the future.
Thank you.
That was the only card I had. Neil, do we have any virtual folks?
Yes, it looks like we have two hands. Teresa Coferd, I will unmute your microphone, and Chris McAllister, you will be in the queue.
Can you hear us, Teresa?
I think we have her now.
Yeah, I think I'm.
Okay, I think we're ready for you, Teresa.
Okay, great. Thank you very much to the council, to the mayor, and all the staffers that are here tonight. I really appreciate it. I am Teresa, and today I'm speaking on behalf of Ann's Heart's Board of Directors. We spoke with you two weeks ago, and you asked us to keep you updated. And so that's what I'm doing right now, is updating you as to what, what our next actions are going to be. June Fathergill, who is our guide and our board president, is gonna be returning soon for a rather long vacation that she's been on. As a board, we plan to, in the next week or two, to work on a new budget and work plan that we hope to be able to submit to you by the end of the month. We are still looking to forge forward to get to a position that will please the council, please us, and allow us to complete our mission, which is to help unhoused women of Springfield and the urban growth boundary around Springfield. We are seeking to know if the redirection of funds is final, and if that redirection of funds excludes Ann Hart, Ann's Heart. We intend to update you on our plans either way, but we would just like some more information. I have spoken with your staffer, and she said that we were only able to speak with you in a public hearing setting. So that's what I'm doing right now. We are currently, as your staff directed, working with the county and other entities to make our proposal stronger. And we hope to have a stronger proposal and a stronger budget for us by the end of the month. Thank you very much for your time, I really appreciate it.
Teresa, where, where are you from?
I, oh, I'm sorry, I am from Eugene, Oregon.
All right, thank you.
All right, our next speaker is Chris McAllister, and Chris, you should be able to unmute your microphone.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. My name is Chris McAllister. I have had the honor, this is unexpected, we're all here for three different reasons, but I've had the honor to work with the previous two folks as the Eagan leads for Springfield. If there's anybody who understands what's happening on the current ground, it's David Strahan, Teresa Coferd, and the work that my team with Carry It Forward does. We are very concerned about our presence in the greater community plan as Carry It Forward, as part of the Springfield community, as part of the communities that help create Eagan and the car camping across the county. A lot of the work that is helping people in a realistic way is born in Springfield, just like many of the people that we serve. I would like to ask that we consider how are we representing if our people don't know how our unhoused are being served? If everybody is covered, then let's see what the numbers are. How many of our Springfielders are being given FDAs? How many of our Springfielders are involved in recovery programs, if that's what they need? I would like to ask that we, that the data matters and that the data drives what we do and what we ask of our peers who may have higher authority on the issues, but do not have the jurisdictional responsibility that Springfield has. I am honored to serve in both the short-term options of Springfield's Eagan to the long-term options of Ann's Heart. A building is a building, and without a building, there is no program, short-term or long-term. The money should not be tied to a business plan for an all-in when that was what was suggested. Please consider helping Ann's Heart find a building. Please help us find a building for Eagan. We've been looking for four years. We went through another building that's now going to be part of the housing system through our brothers and sisters and others at Cornerstown. We, as a community, are rising. But we need to see Springfielders in, in the community meetings. We see Oak Ridge, we see Florence, we see Cottage Grove. Springfield has said that they are working on other things. We, as a community, need to not lose our voice. Much as the unhoused have lost their voice and how their futures are going, we, as Springfielders, cannot lose our voice. We cannot afford to lose more. I encourage you to seek state funding, to seek federal funding, to help raise up our people in the most necessary needs, like we did with the fires, like we did with COVID. We cannot forget those who have fallen when we did not respond quick enough. I am proud to be a Springfielder. I'm proud to serve. And I hope to be proud of what we do next, in the short term, the midterm, and the long term. Thank you for your time, thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Mayor, we have no other speakers. Okay. We're on the council response, does anybody have any response? So Neil, I know there's been some conversations about Eagan, and I don't know if you're ready to update us, or if we're in a position to talk about it at this point.
Yeah, we just need some direction. You would like us to help find spots, we can do that?
I'm, I think I'm open to it. Like, I think that's what we've done historically in the last couple of years. So if maybe you can meet with Dave and get, you know, and get back to us.
If you do that.
But, no, it's okay.
All right. Next item.
I'd like to know as far as resource-wise, how much effort is in, was what Neil is thinking, or how much what you're thinking, it doesn't seem to be very clear. Is it some, some effort? A ton of effort? Investment, no investment? It's a, it's a blank check, so to speak, and I, I don't know if I'm comfortable with that.
What have we done in the past for them?
Oh, I think in the past, we used some staff time to find empty building locations, which we've done, I think, for the last maybe four years.
I I'm okay if Nancy caps it. Right, like, you know, so that it's not just an open-ended, open-ended question, right? Like, I think the question is, what do we do on, when it becomes freezing around here?
Would you be good with that?
Yeah, it's a reasonable amount of effort's fine, but Nancy think, come up with what's reasonable in her mind as well, if it starts to look like it's going to be a a budgetary item, then I'd like to have a heads-up first.
I think that's fair.
I'm just curious what's happened to the previous facilities. I, I understand the one that we were using, the, I didn't know the name. Ebert, Ebert, not Ebert.
In the memorial.
The memorial, was that what, was that the one that was being used for meals?
That was the one we used probably the last three years, maybe. It's across the street from, across the street.
There was another one that was mentioned, and I thought that's the place where we were doing meals, and it got shut down because there was not enough volunteers, and there was, there was a lot of calls for the police. Was that?
So let's do, let's do a couple of things. Maybe we can have the staff prepare some information and kind of get back.
Yeah, 'cause I just like to understand what happened, why I keep, why we're, is this something that they've been looking for for four years? What's, what's the reasoning?
So the challenge, I, I'll give the short version of it and let them fill in some additional information. It moved out of Ebert because of a Uh, it moved out of Ebert because of a sprinkler issue, and then it moved into the memorial building for a couple of years during the pandemic. And then going into this year, we, our goal was always to redevelop the memorial building. And that was going to become staging, the memorial building was going to have a, a construction equipment staged at it for um.
Right.
Building in things, so we can use it. So I think the question from, from a staff perspective is, you know, is the, you know, is the memorial building an acceptable location? You know, to have it. And at that point, I think Seda owns that building, so they would have to come back to Seda and talk about it at that point. So this conversation very much could end up with back at Seda with the, with the staff coming back and asking. If we want to rent the memorial building to the city. All right, other questions? Okay, um. You have more questions?
I, does it have to be an empty building? Is that, right, can be.
Or can be a church, right?
Or a church.
I think churches are good locations if it works for the church.
And I will just flag uh something while they are sitting here and while some of the other Egan volunteers are, that, you know. Anything that people can do to look for the, um, I guess, the, the morning, uh. You know, um. Plan to, when he wraps up for the day to mitigate impacts, right? That is a constant challenge. With anybody, you know, around here and, right, like, I. It's really important that we look to mitigate any, any potential impacts, because that's what allows us to keep the site sort of going on. On any given, uh, on any given day.
Negative impact is my biggest concern.
Thanks, Dave. Um, okay, um, and then Nancy, can you, I, I don't know that you're ready to give us a date about the additional funds. Or is the question?
Yeah, I need to have a little bit more time.
And a little bit more time you'll have? All right, next item, please.
Any of us from the city council?
Happy birthday, Joe. Happy birthday to you.
Thank you.
All right, yes, so, hey. It's uh. Next, next item.
Item, um, business from the city manager. We have, uh, I am number one non-represented SEIU employee wage ratification. Shane Hertz is here for this item.
Good evening, Council, and good evening, Mayor, and happy birthday, Councilfisher. So I am here this evening uh to seek a motion to authorize human resources to increase the pay ranges for our non-represented. SEIU employees by three percent. Uh, these positions have not seen a pay increase since June or July of two thousand twenty-one. Uh, since then have found, fallen considerably behind the market, ranging somewhere between fourteen and twenty percent uh below our comparators. Uh, which has impacted significantly our ability to recruit and retain. Uh, so I'll pause and ask, see if there are any questions.
Are there any questions?
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve adjusting pay ranges for non-represented and SEIU represented position by three percent effective October eight, two thousand twenty-three.
Second to that.
Neil, could you call both places?
Yes, Council Weber.
Yes.
Council Mo.
Yes.
Council Rodley.
Yes.
Council Blackwell.
Yes.
Council Doyle.
I.
And Councilfisher.
Yes, thank you.
Once she passes sixty, I think they're on those. Next item, please, any other business from the city management?
Any business from the city attorney?
I just have uh one item tonight. Just wanted to acknowledge that Kim Harold, who was a former uh city attorney. Um, who passed away recently and he um is a pillar of this community. It's why Judy Harold is, uh, was a retired librarian here. Um, and Tim's, I sent the obituary to the council, but um had worked with Ed Harms and Joe Leahy. And uh, really just a great lawyer and human. So just wanted to acknowledge his passing here at the council meeting tonight.
Thank you for doing that.
And no other business.
All right, we are returned. Thank you, everybody.